Thank you. I'd like to call to order the quarterly board meeting, December 4th, 2024 of the Kentucky Retirement System. And with that, Michael, would you give the legal public statement?
Yes, ma'am. This is a regular meeting of the Kentucky Retirement Systems Board of Trustees. This meeting is being broadcast via video teleconference pursuant to Kentucky revised statute, section 61.826. It may be viewed by the public at the Kentucky Public Pensions Authority offices located at 1260 Louisville Road in Frankfurt, Kentucky. It is also being broadcast to the public via Facebook. If you are speaking and are not appearing by video, please identify yourself before talking. In the event the video or audio broadcast is interrupted, we will attempt to reestablish a connection. If a connection cannot be reestablished within 30 minutes, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled to another date. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. And Sherry, will you do the roll call?
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Hampton?
Here.
Mr. Atkins? Ms. Bova?
Here.
Ms. Eves?
Here.
Mr. Lane?
Here.
Dr. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Piercy?
Here.
Mr. Summers?
Here.
And Ms. Thompson?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. And Sh- Sherry, are there any public comments?
No, ma'am, no public comment today.
Thank you very much. Okay, the next is the approval of the minutes of November 12th, 2024. And is there a motion to approve them? The, I'm sorry, is there a motion to approve the minutes of October 22nd and November 12th?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion on the minutes? So all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, the motion is adopted. And Sherry, I think I see Pam Thompson on line?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay.
She was during the roll call.
Okay, great. Okay, so next is the approval of the June 30th actuarial valuations. And we have Danny on the line and Janie?
Good morning. You guys have me today, Janie Shaw with GRS. So the materials actually have not changed since we discussed them back in November. So I'm just going to do a brief overview of what we discussed and then take any questions or comments from the board. So Sherry, if we can actually go straight to slide 19. Thank you. So as we discussed, so this year's valuation is really just for informational purposes only. The contribution rates and the contribution requirement were set for the two-year period based on the 2023 valuation. So this year's valuation, the 2024 valuation, this is really just to kind of give you a midpoint of what we're doing in the the two-year cycle and kind of see where the contribution rates are. When we come back next year with next year's valuation, that's when we're going to reset those contribution rates. So kind of a quick summary of what we're looking at here. So looking at the K non-hazardous, keep in mind, again, that amortization cost is a dollar amount that's going to be spread across all your employers. You can see that going up slightly. The biggest driver behind that is going to be your insurance fund. Those 2025 Medicare premiums came in quite a bit higher than we are expecting. For the K hazardous and the state police, you can see the contribution rates going down for both of those funds. The biggest driver there is we saw a big increase in your member-covered payroll. More payroll means more, more payroll, that means you're spreading that, your contributions across more payroll, that brings it down. And then also on the state police, we did get an appropriation, which was good to see. So that's really all I have. If there's questions, comments on anything, any of our materials, I'll take.
Thank you, Janie. Are there any questions of Janie? Okay, with that, I don't, we have a motion. It's a matter of, there's no motion on this. So with that, we will go to, I'm sorry?
I believe there, there is a motion to approve the valuations.
Okay, thank you. There is, yes, sorry. Is there a motion to accept the 2024 actuarial valuation for the KERS hazardous and KERS non-hazardous and the state police retirement plan as presented?
I'll make a motion to accept as presented.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. There's been a motion and a second. And is there any further discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none, the motion is adopted. Thank you very much. And next, we have the external audit and we have Ryan Graham is here with us on that.
Lynn, if I may, can I introduce him?
Please.
Great. So Ryan Graham is the, the partner over the audit of the KRS Financial Act for. And he will go through three letters that are standard letters. One of them is the opinion letter that will be published in the Act for. A second letter is also a report over the internal controls that'll also be published in the Act for. And the third letter is a letter directed to those charged with governance, which is this board as well as KPPA management. There are actually two drafts of the Act for in your board materials. The draft that accompanies Blue's letters, that was generated on November 13th, and it's just a financial section. There is a full draft of the Act for beginning on page 313. That was draft, that was published, well, that was generated on November 27th. We've had some changes to that November 27th draft, mostly in the MDNA, making it a little bit more cosmetically pleasing and putting numbers in millions. So with that, I will let Ryan discuss his three letters for us.
Hey, like I said, where they're here, they're not on the most recent draft, but our letters will not change between the most, between what we're seeing here and what's ultimately issued. And that's because we're issuing what are called unmodified or clean opinions. And in these and what we're seeing here on page 230 of the report is our report of independent auditors. The first two paragraphs, these really don't change. They look, they have not changed. There's no standards that have changed or required different wording, except for the fact that this year, unlike previous years, this opinion is just on Kentucky Retirement Systems on its own. And we've talked about that a little bit before in prior meetings, but this year, I want to thank Mike and the team for working with us on that. Our audit opinion is just on KRS, and so that requires pretty, quite a few changes to the report and footnotes, talking, changing, talking about who we're talking about. Moving from KPPA to KRS in a standalone. So that's what we're seeing here, giving that opinion. And again, it's a clean opinion. The rest of the next three pages work through that we've audited under governmental auditing standards. It works through, these are the financial statements and responsibilities of management. And then it works through what are our responsibilities as the auditor. It's of course to do an audit under those governmental auditing standards. So again, a clean opinion, exactly what you want to see here in this report and pretty standard opinion verbiage here. Of course, those Xs will be updated once we finalize page numbers, which I think we're going to do and circle our As and dot our Ts, if you will, tomorrow before final issuance. And then, so not going to go into any details of the report itself, of the footnotes. There, I will just mention, there were no new accounting standards that had a significant impact this year. So most of the changes were, were making it just a KRS report on its own, but happy to answer any questions along, and Mike will be too, of any footnote questions that you have in it. So with that, I'll ask that we go to page 307. That's our next of our three letters. This is our, what we call the yellow book opinion, and it's about internal controls. We do not express an opinion on internal controls. But if we had identified any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies, those would have been reported here. But I'm happy to report that we did not identify any of those. So that's what this letter is communicating here. So it's, again, exactly what you want to hear or see in this letter. And then the last letter is on page 309. And this is the management communication level, or letter, excuse me. And it goes through just what we identify as significant or sensitive estimates, of course, being investments valued at NAV and the estimate or evaluation of the pension and OPAB liabilities, pretty standard and consistent within the past. And then it just goes through, we didn't have any significant difficulties. It does refer to an uncorrected misstatement. In the final version of this one, we are going to remove that, that journal entry. That is a very standard journal entry for those that have alternative investments or investments in a limited partnership. But it was at a level this year that we were able to not include it in this letter. So even if it had been there, it's not something of concern. It's just very, the nature of those investments reporting on a possibly three-month lag. Let's go on down to the next page. Again, we will get management representations tomorrow before we issue. And again, had no other significant audit findings. The last paragraph around other matters does make reference to the required supplemental information. And the supplemental information, and it just goes through our responsibilities as auditors around those as well. So that's my, what I had to note on these letters. Again, I'll pause and take any questions on the letters or the notes and financial statements themselves.
Are there any questions for Ryan? I, I will say in a previous meeting, I did ask Ryan about the, how it was going from the state audit, auditors to Blue, and I don't know if you want to say that again, but I was pretty impressed with that.
Sure. So we have a good working relationship with the APA and take over, you know, when we go back and forth, we have a good relationship there. So it was a smooth transition back to us. I pointed out to Ms. Hampton, one of the pieces of our testing approach is confirming and working with employers, because of course we make a sample. And it's a tiered bucket approach. And so you're rotating through employers and they took our approach. So we were able to just pick, they were continuing our approach and then we were able to pick back up that approach last year. So it was, it was good working with them and no difficulties moving back from them this year.
Okay, thank you. Okay, if there are no questions from Ryan, what I'd like to do is skip to number eight. And we'll come back to seven. I'm assuming that's okay, Michael. And this is Michael Lamb. And this is to make a motion to adopt the KRS Act for as presented and send it to KPPA for publication. So is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
And Michael D., Mike, Mike Lamb, do you have any comments before we make the vote?
Uh, no comments on the document. I do want to give my thanks to Ryan Graham and his team for their diligence in helping us split these Actvers up and their audit work and give kudos to the accounting group for all of the changes that they had to endure as well as other groups within KPPA, including the IT group, communications group, benefits group that helped with this transition. So everyone contributed and I want to express my gratitude to all of them for doing that.
Thank you, and thank your staff and Ryan. Thank you. Any other comments?
I just concur with that. A lot of changes this year and I think they're nice looking reports you've got this year.
Okay, there is a motion and a second. So all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, the motion is adopted. Thanks again.
I have, Lynn, I have a question, a dumb question for Mike Lamb. I was asked by a participant or someone that follows the Retirement Systems. And they said, you used to issue something called a CAFR. And I go, yep. And now you do something called an Act for. And I said, I think they're the same thing. But he said, well, why did you change the name? And I had no answer for that. Is there?
Yeah, there was actually a Gatsby that came out to change the name. The word CAFR is actually a derogatory term to, I think it's a South African dialect country. And so as they started adopting accounting practices there, that was brought to Gatsby's attention. And so they renamed, renamed the annual financial report to Act for versus CAFR. So it is the same thing. It's just now spelled differently and pronounced differently, so.
Well, I was absolutely certain it was the same thing. I just couldn't understand the, why we went to the trouble of changing the name, but that, and in this, this brave new world of ours, I understand.
So now we know the Gatsby is politically correct. Okay, thank you all again. And let me, let's go back to seven. And John, would you like to address the contribution rate?
Yes. The contribution rate was actually set by the legislature in the biannual budget bill. We get the actuarial calculations every year. But it's been, already been set for this fiscal year and next fiscal year. So there's no need to approve the rate, but we've got the information about what the rate would be if it were being reset at this point. It will be reset next year.
Okay, thank you. And then Mike Lamb, it's back to you for the GFOA Act for letter?
Yep, on page 467. So when we publish our Act for, we will submit it to the GFOA and they review it and present an award to us if it's in compliance with their standards. These were the comments that were provided to us on last year's Act for. And so our responses are in there. They're not, they weren't too complicated. They kind of wanted us to clarify the division that was responsible. And so we've done that on the front cover of the Act for. They also recommended we combine the prior management responsibility letter and the executive director letter, which we refer to now as the transmittal letter. So those have been combined into one letter in this year's Act for, and it does refer to the MDNA as well as other schedules as required. We will validate all our page numbers before we publish after the KPPA meeting. And there was a small error noted in the percentages that were presented. So we corrected that on the version that was on the website. And we have done our best to double check all of those percentages and numbers as well this year. And then we ensured that the actuarial certification letters referred to the standards of practice for funding purposes, which they do. So we will submit this to the GFOA along with our new Actvers upon approval and publication of them.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions with Michael? He's not off the hook yet. He's, he's, we'll get him a little bit later. Right now, we have, Pruitt, are you going to discuss the quarterly investment report?
Well, I'm going to introduce Steve Willer to do that.
I think it's Anthony.
Anthony, I'm sorry. Anthony's going to go cover this for us today. Anthony, would you talk about the results?
Sure. Yeah, thanks, Spirit. Yeah, I think we've, we, we, over some of this in the IC meeting, it's, it's been a strong quarter to start. We're talking about the end of, through the end of September, most of the K and S plans were up around high fours, low fives percent against benchmark of about four and a half. It kind of the same trends as the past, you know, several quarters, whereas it's been private equity has the lag with, since their benchmark is Russell 3,000 plus 3%. And that was up 26% over the past year. So you shouldn't, marks aren't going to catch up with that. You know, probably because managers don't want to look too optimistic or have overly unrealistic marks. So it's, that's why the short timeframe is hard to compare. But the real assets, both real, real return and real estate have, have benefited over the past, over the past several quarters. They've outperformed, led by MLPs, which continue to be strong. And actually, we haven't got, we haven't got our tortoise number yet, but November, the indexes were up 14 to 15%. So that's going to be hopefully some more gains there. Real estate obviously has still been suffering. Our opening core funds have hung in there pretty well. They have, as we've discussed probably before, relatively little office exposure, which has really been the thing that's hurt a lot of performance there. Multi-family is, is starting to have some cracks in it, but it's, but still pretty strong. And we have decent exposures to those and other sectors like industrial that have continued to, to hang in there. So, so that's kind of the, that's been kind of the drivers of performance that we have there. In terms of just compliance and internal things, the internal portfolios that we use to make sure that our allocations are close to target, continue to perform as expected. And that's also what, how there are no compliance violations you reported. In the peer universe, our risk-adjusted returns continue to be in the top decile quartile over, over the, the different time periods. So that's kind of what we've had. Happy to take any questions. Oh, no, I was going to ask a preview. We have a couple other areas. We're still working on some things. Obviously, I think the, the IC helped us improve a couple of continuation vehicles in the past few months. One, that was energy related and one that was total related, both which kind of fall in the real assets area. We're also potentially working on a transportation leasing investment before year end. It'll be, it'll be technically a secondary sale of an open-end fund. So some folks would be getting out and we would try and get in if we can make that work. And we also already have transportation through barges. And that will probably, we may add to that in the first half of next year. As well as some of our sports investments, there's, you guys may have seen in the news that the NFL has finally approved private institutional investment. And our fund is, along with another one that we're not invested in, are likely to have deals approved at the owners' meeting this month. So you may see some headlines for that. So that's, that's something to keep, keep in mind. And those are quite large deals. So they require a lot of capital and that's something that we're considering for early next year as well. So yeah, now I'm happy to take any questions if you guys have some.
Are there any questions of Anthony? I have one. If you're transportation leasing, is that airplanes?
No, it'd be rail, actually. But they, they actually do have some of that in there. And at this firm, I was more interested in the rail exposure only because I think the supply-demand dynamic is more favorable. They also are doing intermodal as well. Again, I just think that the rail and the, it, it's not quite as favorable as the barge dynamic where just there isn't any new supply. And not going to be any for a while, if you listen to the Kirby earnings calls. But for the rail, it's still pretty favorable, still very necessary. Actually, we listened to, I had an energy co-invest call yesterday. And they talked about how they actually will need rail to, to move their product out of where they are in Utah. That's part of the things that they'll have to do to, to make that investment work. So yeah, it's still very essential and has hung in there for, you know, again, it will, we think it's attractive just generally, but then also if, if we have more of an inflationary environment in the near future, then it should benefit from that as it can reset the lease rates on a regular basis.
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is back to Michael Lamb for the first quarter financial statement.
Thank you. On 501 and 502, I'll go back and forth on those two pages for a minute. Let's start on 502. So the bottom line for the quarter ended 9:30. No, we didn't update that chart. Okay. Basically, the 2024 KRS total is $9.1 billion in fiduciary net position. The first quarter at the end of 2023 was 7.4 billion. That is up 22.2%. And the three pension plans themselves total 6.4 billion. And that's an increase in the pension plans of 23.89% or 1.3 billion. The three insurance plans total 2.8 billion, and that's an increase of 18.45% or 428 million when compared to the first quarter of last year. There are various notes documenting the changes. If we go back up one page, like note one, for example, shows the result of cash management. You know, prior quarter last year, we had $2 million sitting in our cash accounts. Now we're down to 529,000. So we're, we're paying attention to that. We're adjusting that as needed. And then also on that page, I want to go into the investments at fair value. They increased 38.11% or 2.4 billion when you're comparing quarter to quarter. And the pension plans are up 44.7% by themselves. The insurance plans are up 25.13%. Most asset classes have large upside swings compared to the prior year's quarter. Like core fixed incomes up 47.46% or 578 million, real returns up 321% or 563 million, et cetera, et cetera. And so that's what's driving the increase in the net position. If we go to the next financial statement, which begins on page 503, and I'm going to have us go to page 504. And this is explaining the increase from June 30 to 9:30. And so if you look at the 2024 total, it's $507 million. That's how much increased in the first quarter. In comparison to the increase in the first quarter last year, that only increased $32 million. So a pretty big swing when you're looking at this year to year. The three pension plans show 303 million, 52 million, and 38 million. And then the three insurance plans show 78 million, 27 million, and 10 million. If we go back up to page 503, we can see that this is driven by the net appreciation in the fair market value investments as discussed in, on the balance sheet above. That's $386 million. If you look at right, that first line, 386 million on the 2024 total. And that's largely from public equities and core fixed income. We do outline that in note five. And so we take all of this quarter activity down to the contribution reports, which begin on page 505. And the yellow line there for net contributions show that all three of the pension plans reported positive net contributions of 110, 110 million, 5.8 of one ten, hundred and ten million, five point eight million, eight point two million. That's a hundred and twenty-four million in total for the pension plans. In addition, if we do remove the net investment income of thirty point one million, seven point one million and four point seven million. From those numbers, we are still positive cash flow of seventy-nine point nine million, three point five million in the state police. I take that backwards, positive cash flow in two of the three plans. So the hazard plan is minus one point three million for the quarter. The member contributions are up one point nine million across all three of these plans. Employer contributions are down six point two million. And the ALC is down in the non-hazardous by nine point four million, when you're comparing quarter to quarter. The general fund appropriations are up fifteen million in non-hazardous and six point two million in S P R S. Benefit payments and refunds are up nine point seven million, three point nine million and one point seven million. And the administrative costs have remained static. If you look at both the unrealized gains and realized gains for all three of the plans, they far exceed the realized and unrealized losses from the prior year's first quarter. So that's, again, what's driving a lot of the increase in the net pension the net pension, net position for the pension plans. Insurance plans, they show that there is negative net contributions of one point one million, point one million and one point five million. Again, that's driven by the employer contributions going down as those funds have become more closely funded at a hundred percent. There was also a decrease in the human gain share from the prior quarter to this quarter as well. If we do remove the net investment income from these three insurance plans, we show negative cash flow of thirteen point two million, four point three million and three point two million in the insurance funds for K R S. That's the financials, I can move on to the invoice chart if there's no questions.
No questions.
All right, moving on, so this is showing the balance at nine thirty, it's five point seven million dollars. It's eighteen percent or one point two million dollars lower than the six thirty balance of six point nine million. The bulk of this decrease is to a decrease in the health insurance reimbursement standard sick leave and omitted employer invoices. And then there's an offset because there's an increase in the ALC amounts and that's directly attributable to the Kentucky River Community Care as they continue to not pay their ALC invoices, which are a hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars a month. Most of these employers are being dealt with through legal in some action or another. And then if we drop down to the second part of that chart, it's the top ten. So it does show there hasn't been many changes to those from quarter to quarter. During the quarter, we did have nine penalty invoices that were waived, totally nine thousand dollars. One penalty invoice that was created for a thousand dollars and one thousand ten dollars for the quarter and five penalty invoices that were paid, totaling five thousand six hundred and forty for the quarter. The next part of this presentation is the admin budget, this here is the summary. For the quarter, we are right online, we've spent about twenty-five percent of the budget in total and in each category, we are doing better than the budget allows for, for the quarter. I do want to point out that for the legal contracts, we've spent thirty-nine percent of the ICE Miller budget and thirty-five percent of, that's the Johnson Bronco line item that's specific to the C plan. And we've, we've asked for an increase in the current ICE Miller contract to accommodate ongoing litigation. But that's all I have on the summary related to the admin expenses. And the details are presented by line item in your packet. And I would be happy to take any questions on those if you have any. And then at the bottom of page five ten is the allocation to the pension plans for the first quarter based on the approved hybrid percentage. The charts below that show the J P Morgan Chase fees for each month, as well as the hard dollar interest that's been earned due to the change in how we are managing those bank accounts. And I believe that's all I have.
Okay, well, thank you very much, Mike. Are there any questions of Mike on any of the financial reports?
Mike, you mentioned that, this is John Shilton, you mentioned that the ICE Miller contract needs to increase due to ongoing litigation. That's also true with the Dentons. And Lynn, we need to approve that at some point.
It's, it's on the agenda, John, it's number thirteen.
Okay, good.
So thanks for bringing it up, so Mike knows.
Thank you.
No other questions, I think Dewan, you're up with the hazardous duty requests? Which one I thought was interesting.
All right, good morning. Today, we have two requests. We have the executive director with Criminal Investigations Department position with the Attorney General's Office. And we also have a lieutenant colonel position with Eastern Kentucky University. They are both being requested for hazardous duty coverage. Both of these positions do meet statutory guidelines as they both require peace officer standards and certification. If anybody has any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. If no questions, I recommend the board to approve these positions for hazardous duty coverage.
Are there any questions? Dewan, does that mean that they're required to carry a gun in simple terms?
Well, the lieutenant colonel position is required. Also, the attorney general from the employer, they stated they are required to carry a firearm in some instances, but not all, so. But yes, when they meet the peace officer standards, that means they qualify as a police officer.
Okay, thank you.
I have one question, do, does the previous executive director or lieutenant colonel, did they also have to like apply for that coverage or? Or is it because, is it just because they're new?
From my understanding, this is a newly created position with the Criminal Investigations Department. It's federally funded and it was a newly created executive director position in the Criminal Investigation Department. So these are new people being put in these positions.
So I guess does it guarantee that the next lieutenant colonel will also be under this?
Yes, we're approving that position, so yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ryan, so any other questions? Okay, there can, there's, let's see, there is a motion. And the motion is to approve the hazardous duty request as presented. Is there a motion?
I saw move, Mary.
Okay, thank you, Mary, second?
I'll second, Pruitt.
Thank you, Pruitt, and any further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passed, the motion is adopted. Thank you very much. Okay, John, now we're on to a discussion on the Denton contract.
Right, Dentons have been our.
Hey, John, should I sign off? You want to let me know when to come back on?
Mary, haven't you been away a year? Is that Mary talking?
No, that was Janet Jakubowitz, sorry, Lynn.
Okay, sorry.
I came on for the closed session, I just wanted to be timely. But if you're going to talk about the firm and the fees, perhaps I shouldn't step out. And then John perhaps can text me and I will join again.
Yeah, or, or if you would like, I could put you in the waiting room.
That would be great.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sherri. Thanks, Janet.
Yeah, Dentons has been, and that being Janet Jakubowitz and Ben Lewis have been our counsel since K R S was reorganized in two thousand twenty-one. We've got a contract with them that extends through the end of this fiscal year. But there's been a lot of litigation activity so far this fiscal year. And we had a budget amount of fifty thousand dollars for the fiscal year. And I would propose that we increase that to a hundred and twenty-five thousand budget item with no changes in their contract rates or any other provisions. It's just a matter of budgeting and excess litigation activity that's been occurring and will continue to occur.
Okay, thank you, John, and I, my comments are that I think we've got very good attorneys. We've benefited from that.
Yeah.
Are there any, any questions?
Lynn, I will recuse from voting on this.
Okay. Got it. For those of you that don't know, that's, Mary is an alumna of Denton. Okay, well, if there's no further discussion, would, that I have a motion to approve an amendment to the Denton Bingham Greenbaum contract to increase the payments to, from authorization. John, what did you say, one seventy-five?
One twenty-five.
One twenty-five total. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that Denton Bingham contract be expanded to a hundred and twenty-five thousand.
Okay, thank you very much, Pruitt, a second?
I second it.
Okay, thanks for giving, all those in favor? Please say aye. Opposed? Hearing none, the motion is adopted. Okay, now we're going to the CEO update, John.
Yes, thank you. The last meeting we had was just three weeks ago. And most of my time during that three week period has been associated with things that we're going to talk about in closed session. So other than that, I really don't have anything to report.
Okay, thank you, John, I will say we're getting our money's worth of use it right now. With that now, new business, I have no new business. And we have a, we have, we have Ryan coming on next for the K P A Executive Director's report.
Sure, thank you very much. As John stated, the closed session is kind of the key to this meeting, so I'll be brief as well. Our legislative priorities, the two that pension spiking, that cleans up from the Court of Appeals case and the reorganization has been sent to L R C, we think are well positioned, clearly leadership will drive that. On the reorg bill, we have been asked to present that on Monday to P P O B. We internally call that the Mike Lamb bill. So maybe would encourage that branding going forward. The P P O B in November went really well, it was evaluations and as I stated Monday, we'll address the reorg bill. I have a quick update on the Louisville office, Steve's done a lot of work, Rebecca's done a lot of work. That's back with facilities and now we're just kind of on their timeline to get the best and final, based on the three revisions of drawings that we've sent them. Rebecca's out this week, she's done a lot on strategic planning, item number four, we've got the teams working. That's for your view. In terms of staffing, we've got the numbers there. I am happy to articulate the Team Kentucky internship program. Right now, investments is in the lead in terms of applicants. So we'll continue to work on those six positions. And just in closing, K E C C, we've kind of hit our internal goals, so happy to mention that. And then there are kudos to Sherri and Sandy on some kind of after action on the various board meetings on how we kind of track and make sure that those follow-up items are implemented. So they've done a really good job on that. So with that, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ryan. And so that now is the end of our open agenda. And so we now have, we need a motion to enter closed session pursuant to K R S sixty-one eighty-one, oh, zero, eight one zero C to discuss pending litigation. Is there a second? We need a motion first.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Crystal, is there a second?
So.
Okay, thank you, Pruitt. Okay, all those in favor, or is there any further discussion? And then all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion is adopted and Philip, would you take us out of left?
You need to read the, the statement.
Okay, thank you. Do I read it or? Okay, thank you.
Okay. A motion having made an open session to move into closed session for a specific purpose and such motion having carried by majority vote and open public session, the board shall now enter closed session to consider litigation pursuant to K R S sixty-one point eight one zero one C because of the necessity of protecting the confidentiality of the system's litigation strategy and preserving any available attorney or client privilege.